Call in November 12th, 2018, U S D three fifty Board of Education order. Welcome our visitors this evening. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to add number three on the business items for discussion of fuel purchases.
Any other changes to the agenda? I've done. Take a motion to approve.
So move second.
Move the second, the board approved the agenda as amended. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carried, five zero. The consent agenda, any, anything changed there?
Uh, no, nothing unusual to report other than on the budget, you see, on the parents' teachers. Plugging in the contract information, something goofy happened, added ninety-five thousand dollars to the encumbrances, so that looks, that looks wacky, but the expenses are correct, but those encumbrances are not. Okay. That budget's, the budget's in good shape there.
Mr. President, I'll move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So move the second, and the board approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carried, five zero. Are there any patron comments this evening? Not?
Did, did you okay that, or was it okay for me to make comment?
Go, go ahead, sure.
Oh, okay. I wanted permission to run a cable drop into here for live feed. I put the trunk in a nineteen eighty-five, it goes clear to the community room, they're right outside the hallway, I just put the drop in, it's here, so it, it's no problem.
Any problem with that?
Before we do that, I'll need to check board policy on what, whether that's allowed, live feed is allowed.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I can't think of what our board policy says off the top of my head, but before we do that, I'll make sure we don't have to make a change in policy. But, yeah, we've been recording for years and years, and I don't know why life would be different.
I don't, can't imagine. I think the city does, doesn't it?
Yep.
But I'll check on board policy, just to make sure. Okay. You'll let Mr. Cut right now before the next meeting?
Yeah, I won't be going live before January anyway, 'cause the next board meeting is on a music program for K through three, and they take precedent, I'm sorry, guys.
All right. Anything else? We'll move on to the business agenda. Item number one, laser engraver presentation by Mr. Moritz.
Where would you like me to present this? So it's just on the, on the.
Come right on up here, move that chair if you want.
Sure. Hi, everybody.
Okay.
Uh, thank you for being here today. I, I've been bugging Mr. Meyer about getting a laser engraver for quite some time, and I'm sure you guys had a decision in this, so thank you very much, and from all the students, we have a laser engraser, a laser engraver now. What is a laser engraver? It's exactly as it says, it takes a laser beam and engraves on wood, how would you pass this around? Acrylic, glass, almost any material, even including brick, except metal. You have to have a bigger wattage laser for that stuff, but you can etch all kinds of stuff. It even cuts out wood. I cut out some little tic-tac-toe boards with the pieces that go with them as a sample, just kind of show you the detail here. So it engraves, it cuts through material, endless possibilities, very customizable. Kids have endless possibilities to create whatever they want. We, we laser engrave on cutting boards, we've done all sorts of ideas, I mean, what else have we done? Well, here, here's a sample of what we have done. I took some milk cartons and I cut out some wings for this wind turbine, I even cut out the plate on here too with a laser engraver, and when we were talking about our wind turbine unit, we actually measured how much voltage it, it is and how the science works, and, but I used the laser engraver to cut some of these parts out. When I was in Stafford, we did these LED nameplates. Just cut a piece of wood out, put some LEDs in the bottom, and then you could set it on your desk and have a little nameplate or something, but a lot of possibilities. It cuts through acrylic, and I think the max it cuts is maybe quarter inch plywood, but that, that's probably about it, so. I have some keychains that I cut out from acrylic. I have one on my keychain, and I get a lot of compliments, so if you guys want some, you guys can have some, okay? And if you want some to bring home to your spouses, okay, I'll, I'll put those there for your kids, so please take as many as you want, but, um, any questions about the laser engraver?
Like a CAD program that you program designs into, or?
It came with a program. Yes, it is AutoCAD compatible. You can draw in AutoCAD and then transfer that file, whether it's a, a scan, like it reads pixels, or it could read a path, and follow an outside path, that's just how I cut this out too. It scanned all of this, and then it cut the outside around there. It works with Corel Draw, it came with its own program, and then AutoCAD is the other one, so.
That's cool. That's pretty cool.
It is cool. It, and I'm really happy we have one, and the kids are really happy we have one too. Got more ideas going.
There's a rotary tool, that?
Oh, yes. Um, I haven't been able to get it figured out. If you want to do cylindrical objects, like wine glasses or Yeti cups, you could do those. You program it in, any text or logo you want, it gets it on that, on a cylinder, just kind of rolls back and forth as the laser goes by. But, it's, it's pretty cool. We, yeah, I'm really happy we have it, so, thank you very much.
Fifty-seven hundred dollars, and about twenty-five hundred of that was paid for with our Perkins grant. We have a consortium with ESDAC, that we get some funds every year for that, and then the foundation shipped in the rest, the remaining thirty-two hundred for that classroom grant.
Whoever's part of that decision, thank you very much. So, any other questions about the laser engraver? I, do you guys have Apple TV? I just have a short video.
I don't, no. I didn't think about.
Basically, it just has a laser head, and it goes really fast, it just scans back and forth, back and forth, and that laser is so tiny and it's very precise. When I did this one, actually, this one was a larger print, I guess you can call it, and it took about twenty-four minutes, so, so, I mean, we had some really big ones, which almost took forty minutes, but that, usually we don't get that big, so.
Can we make license plates? Like the acrylic license plates?
Yeah.
You get different colored acrylic?
We used to do that at the college.
Yeah.
Pieces like this, and then cut out the plates and stuff.
Be a fundraiser. Good, we talked about that, and I want to say, you know, I, anytime you get kids to create things, that really enhances their, their educational experience, and I think this is, just opens up a whole new world of, of kids to be able to create different items and do different things with their minds, so, I think it's, I think it's a really good addition. Thank you, Mr. Moritz, for getting going.
Yes, you're welcome. You're welcome. Absolutely. I found a nine volt battery, I was running around trying to find one, I did not find one, but this is a gift to you for helping me get the laser engraver and, and dealing with me, so.
That is wonderful.
Yeah, battery's on.
So that'll shine up through that acrylic, right?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that enough. There's LEDs in there, the light shines upwards, and it hits, it, I guess reflects or refracts off of the engraved part.
What, uh, what class do you have this in?
Mostly the woods class.
Woods?
I taught a little bit for my eighth graders to get them, kind of spark their interest. We just did a small practice piece, I showed them how the program works, and then we did some custom designs, and I said, but when you get to my high school wood shop classes, then we can do more of this stuff on my cutting boards and other, other projects, but mostly the woods class.
So you feel like this is gonna help get more kids in your classroom?
I hope so. We have a display case, I'm starting to put stuff in there, and I think kids are starting to ask questions, like, oh, how does that work, or what is that? One time, well, when I was in Stafford, we had a kid learn this AutoCAD, or in laser engraving program, and he got hired in Great Bend making fifteen bucks an hour, 'cause he knew how to do this stuff, he was working for a design company, and it's, it's a pretty good deal, right out of high school, just no experience other than what he learned in high school, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item number two, K A S B Convention Delegate.
Can I mention real quick, we have some treats here from our kitchen staff, Jamie Norton, the ladies put together something.
Okay.
It's a food. So, you guys help yourself if you want.
Take some home.
Yep.
Sure, thank you for us.
I will. So the K S B Convention Delegate, if anybody plans to attend the convention, we can assign a delegate, but I haven't heard from anybody that's interested in going to the convention this year, so.
What are you doing, what's the date?
Uh, November thirty, December first, be, uh, mostly Saturday, then a Sunday.
To Pika?
Overland Park. It's usually the weekend of the first, first basketball game. It's a good experience, I've been a couple times, if anybody would like to go. Yeah, the thirtieth and the first, it starts on the thirtieth, there's events on that Friday, and then the main conference is Saturday, into Sunday.
Well, we can leave it open, let Josh know if your schedule's free up. All right?
Yep.
All right, item three, fuel.
Um, this is one of those items I think I emailed about, and maybe a Friday note about considering where we purchase our fuel. Currently, we purchase all of our fuel from the co-op, from the shortstop out there. They do okay, there's been issues with their pumps here and there, but nothing major. Thought is that with another provider in town, maybe we should consider purchasing our, some of our fuel from, from Whites. We would still for sure leave the diesel at the co-op, you know, we run, we run diet fuel, we don't pay taxes, just like our farmers in our, in our school buses, so they don't have that option at, at Whites anyway, getting the buses in there, but it would be difficult, and keeping the business spread out, so. They had, we've got a couple options for accounting on that, Phillips sixty-six has a fleet card, and then there's another program, this WEX fleet program, that, that have rebates for fuel purchased, and they, they cover a lot more vendors than just Phillips sixty-six, so. So there's other possibilities for how we would manage that, you know, right now we just have an account with the co-op, our cards. The difficulty there is when we leave town, we're always putting it on a credit card, which isn't a huge deal, but then we have to manage those receipts.
Do we fuel up much outside of St. John?
Not a lot, no. When we go, you know, a trip to Topeka, we'll fuel up somewhere else, go up to Kansas City area, but, not very often, but sometimes we do on longer trips.
Would there be any opportunities for a, a discount for a bulk, or so many gallons used in a, in a year, or?
Maybe.
With Whites?
I, I don't know directly with Whites, Phillips sixty-six. That WEX program, I haven't called them and talked through how that works, but there is a rebate program there, and again, that covers more vendors than just the Phillips sixty-six, but I'd be glad to get more details, but didn't want to dive too deep into it, if we wanted to just say, no, let's stick with, with cans for all the fuel. So, I'm not asking for a decision, I guess I'm asking for some direction.
Think it'd be worth looking into, to see if it could help us on cost while keeping it local.
I agree.
Yeah. We are not a shareholder with, with the co-op, I'm not even sure how that works, I had a phone call from somebody, said, you know, if you buy shares in the co-op, you get, you get some rebates for fuel, I had no knowledge of that, is anybody aware of that?
We'd be patronage if you.
Yeah.
But you're proposing leave the diesel, that's a lot, but the gasoline through the Whites.
Yeah.
I think that would be supporting both.
Okay. We'll look at how we would go about doing that, and come back before we make a firm decision on that.
Okay. All right. Move on to communications, board members' activities and reports tonight, anything there?
No.
Sean? Yeah?
Just a day to the daddy, date night, nice, nice meal for us, have fun, games.
Okay, that's a dollar.
Mm-hmm. All right.
It's always a good time.
You has had a couple dollars.
Yeah. Carl?
Nope.
I don't have anything to report on tonight either, administrative reports?
Um, just, just last week, again, we had a few more new students added to our district, in fact, a family of five moved in, three of them are, one of them middle, or junior high, two of them high school, and then the other two are elementary, I think, so it's really good to see those moving in, even though it's after the date, but we've got, and, and they're a good, good addition to us, I think, so. I think our numbers have gone up a few since, since the twentieth, when we reported on that, and that's good. Our robotics meet, that was supposed to be a scrimmage on the seventeenth of this month, has been canceled. She needed, there, there's up to sixteen teams, and we only had four that signed up, and part of that is because of other things going on on Saturday, you know, being a Saturday, it was, and I think right before Thanksgiving was kind of hard for some of the teams to go. We're gonna go ahead and continue with our idea of doing a full meet in January, but we're gonna look at some options, maybe have it during the week, 'cause we already have a conflict with, with the weekend we'd scheduled it for. So we're gonna look at maybe doing it during the week, during the school day, that would make it easier for some of those schools to make it, and hopefully it goes. You see, Ms. Sevki, she's been pretty stressed out about this, she's doing a lot of work on it, and everything on her end she needs to do, so, if it looks like she's tired, she probably is from dealing with that, but I appreciate all her work. Tomorrow, no, excuse me, Wednesday, we will have our SAFE kickoff assembly, and the SAFE is seatbelter for everyone, so Mrs. Patterson organizes that, and she's got, we'll have a speaker come in for about an hour for all of the seven twelve students, and then we'll have stations that they go through for nine twelve after that, and that's our half day, where we get out in the afternoon for PD, so it's, we chose that day so it wouldn't disrupt two days, but, kids will do like, they put on goggles, make it like you're intoxicated and try and drive a golf cart if the weather's right, and we'll have a session where we talk about what happens if we lose a student, you know, what the impact is, and those sorts of things, so. It's a good, be a good program. Also, the fourteenth, if you talk to anybody who has a senior financial aid night, Miss Hacker will put on to talk about Philharmonic Fabs and scholarship applications and applications to college and stuff, that's a, a pretty important night, and there's people who haven't ever been through that process before. On December first, very proud to say that we have five of our students that'll be in the district on our choir, Aaron, Shayla, Brittany, Bree, and Luis went and tried out and qualified, and we took eleven, and I don't know if you saw the Facebook post, but St. John did really well compared to some of the other schools our size with the numbers we got in and everything, very proud of those students. Junior high basketball, numbers are really strong, we have twenty-two boys out, and three with three managers, and twenty-one girls with two managers. High school basketball started tonight, I think we have seventeen boys and fourteen girls, is that about what you got?
Sure.
Josh, so, again, good numbers for that, that's, that's positive. Parent-teacher conference turnout, I don't have exact numbers, Stephanie sent out the grades that didn't get picked up by parents before I had a chance to really look at the, what we had, and she thought she sent eleven envelopes. Well, some of those had more than one student, so we think they were pro, if we go back and count, about sixteen or seventeen students, seven twelve, who did not have their grade cards picked up from parent teacher, and that is phenomenal, that's about a ninety-two percent attendance rate, I was very happy with that, so. Other than that, everything's just going on at the, at the high school, junior. Any questions?
How are you doing?
I think I'm doing good, might need to ask some other people out.
We'll talk about that here.
That's an executive session. No, I'm really, really enjoying it still, it's been, been very good for me, and I'm, I think the, the support that I've had from staff and everything's been really good, the one issue that I talked to you about earlier is the tardies and attendances and stuff, and we've got a group of people who are ready to step up and try and come up with a plan to give some motivation to be here, not, so that everything's, everything's not punitive, and we're gonna meet with that group on Wednesday and try and kick something off in the spring, so that we can have some rewards for kids that are doing what they're supposed to do when they're supposed to be there. I have one person who said, well, we shouldn't reward them for every little thing, and I agree, but I work, my, my paycheck is an extra secret reward, you know, so I think everybody needs that to some extent, so, we're not gonna go crazy with it, but we're gonna do some things to hopefully let the kids have some fun and realize that we recognize that they're doing good things.
Thank you, Mr. Moritz.
Mr. Mar. We have some professional development coming up, we're gonna have a, well, we have a little bit of time this week, we're doing a book study for elementary with that Leader in Me, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, we talked a little bit about that last year, we're doing a book study this year with the elementary, and then we're working on our student information system, it's our grading program, and our food service, all of, all of our records, transcripts, scheduling, gosh, what else? The system does a lot of things.
Attendance tracking.
Yeah, attendance, all the state reporting, appliance stuff, looking at changing that over, so, we're gonna, our committee, we've got a committee together, we've got a few demos scheduled here coming up, so we're gonna start that process here Wednesday, discussing that, and, you know, currently we pay eleven-five for our system. Switching over is gonna take some training costs, and setup fees, and data migration, and there's some upfront costs there, the numbers I've seen anywhere from fifteen to fifty, I got one the other day for fifty grand to do that, but the, the two that I've looked at, we've got approximate pricing on her, four to seven thousand dollars per year, you know, so ongoing costs will be less, I'm pretty certain in the end, there will be some upfront costs, but we'll have a better system, we're not happy with what we've got now. We're doing a poverty simulation in January, so our staff's gonna go through some training on that, see, really dig deep in how, how people that live in poverty function in their day-to-day life, and then we have some more work on poverty, more specific about working with kids. In February, we go, we have a national speaker, Ruby Payne, in Lyons, I believe that's where we're going, Lyons, to our joint professional development service, school districts, so. Parent-teacher conferences, we had one pocket in fifth and sixth grade where, you know, we did student-led conferences at the high school, and in fifth and sixth grade, we were still doing, teachers are there, everybody come in, wait, and visit with the teacher, and, well, that teacher's open, I'll go over here, and then I lose my spot in line, and it's just, it's a hectic environment, and, you know, we got to looking at if, if, for instance, Mr. Smith, if he wanted to visit with every single parent, that's the goal, wanted to visit with every single parent, in the seven hours that we have scheduled, it would be a seven-minute conference, and that's not, that's not long enough, so we went to more of the student-led conferences, they have their advisory, the four teachers down in that area have eleven, twelve, thirteen kids each, so, the, the parents went and met with that teacher, and then there was some time, if they really needed to go visit with Mrs. Long, they could do that specifically, but, we had about ninety-two percent turnout for our conferences as well, so, it's probably typical for elementary, junior high, high school, probably more like eighty percent, so ninety-two percent is, is incredible. We had a robotics night the other night, we got our third grade involved this year, they've got the Spiro robots that they program to, you know, the, the program that they had was to get it to go forward one meter and stop, and then over a meter and stop, and then back a meter and stop, so they're, they're coding those things and programming them in, and then our fifth and sixth grade's still rolling with the robotics, and then our high school, so, had a pretty good turnout for that night, and those little robots for third grade were provided by the Education Foundation also, for the classroom grant. Parents' teachers, our two ladies went to St. Louis for some training last week, all paid for by the grant, it's a requirement of the grant, so we should be up and running here first of the year on that, and get rolling with all that. Looking at an innovative breakfast program, we've got a few options, how we're gonna start that is they'll have a kiosk out in the hallway, so rather than kids having to come at seven forty and sit down and eat breakfast, they can just grab a, you know, a roll and a milk and a juice, and stand in the hallway, or if they get there right at eight, grab it and go to class, and eat it right at the beginning of class, so that'll get more kids eating that maybe wouldn't choose to, for whatever reason. We may consider doing a little more with elementary, and, but this, this program currently would be just focused on our, on our upper-level kids. Financial audit, Mark will be here next month to present that, one thing that did come up, and we had already talked about it, was our investing some funds, so, he did bring that up, with interest rates increasing now, we need to, we need to be on the ball with, with investing those funds. Corvira water conflict, I didn't want to beat a dead horse, but I did want to make sure you had a, a copy of the letter that we got, in response from the Department of Interior, I didn't think for one second they would send a response to us, so, I believe I emailed this, does that sound familiar? "One comment on the, on the backside, we are genuinely concerned about the sustainability of water resources in central Kansas, not only for the refuge, but for all stakeholders in the Rattlesnake, Rattlesnake Creek Basin." I think that one sentence shows that they clearly don't understand the issue, it's not a sustainability issue, it's, there's a sustainable solution other than reducing pumping, and I think that's, that's very clear.
I didn't think much of their letter. They clearly didn't listen to what we have to say, and evidently they don't care about our school district, so, I feel we made the right decision.
Sure.
And your article in the newspaper was spot-on, I'm glad you, you did that, and to let the public know what's actually going on.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Sure. That's an issue that's, it's going to affect their wellness. And then the SAFE defend, I think I emailed that letter to you as well, that situation. They've already updated the firmware and made some adjustments. So whether they have the final fix or not on ensuring that this won't happen again, there's that fine line between keeping it, they want it loose enough where in a crisis, it's not gonna decline a fingerprint that it should be accepting. But to be so loose is to be set off when a, when somebody who's not in the system scans their fingerprint, so. I feel comfortable with their response. They've been very, very responsive to us. Our classroom doors are, this, this has been a challenge. We got the doors in. They came to put them in, they're a little bit too small all the way around. They fit, they latch, but they were cut wrong. The gap is, is too wide. So he's working with the vendor to get new doors because the manufacturer made the error. They had the glass here, they didn't have the frames for the windows, so. You might as well not have a door, all you have to do is stick your arm in and open the latch. So we retrofitted a, some creative engineering. If you wanted to go look at it, I'll show you. So the doors are secure, they're ugly. Frames came in the other day. The glass is too big for the frames, so they drove all the way over from Woodstock to do that, drove all the way back. So I don't have an ETA on the frames or the new glass. We're looking at December twenty or so for the new doors. He's pushing to get them, get them going. For now, the glass and windows is the most important thing. We can live with the doors being just a little too small, but, because again, they'll latch. But we want it right, so it's been a challenge. So I wish I would've ended on the negative, but. The robotics thing was fine. That's what I had, I keep. Yep. Oh, back on the student information system real quick. Our goal was to decide maybe in March, have a decision then. One of the, one of the vendors has a significant discount if we can decide that by January one and sign a contract. We wouldn't have to pay for it this year if we would have signed a contract. So we may push that timeframe up after we have these demos. So I may be asking you to make a decision in December, so just heads up about that.
Okay? Looks like we have two executive session meetings tonight. Superintendent's evaluation is first up. So we need Mr. Meyer and ten minutes. Entain the motion.
Mr. President, I move the board going to executive session to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A with Mr. Meyer to be included. And we return to open session at six forty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second of the board, go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A with Mr. Meyer to be included and that we return to open session at six forty-four. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carried, five zero. Okay, back in open session. Our second executive session for the night will be acquisition of real property. Be with Mr. Meyer for five minutes. Entain the motion.
I move the board going to executive session to discuss the potential purchase of property pursuant to the except, exception for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property under K O M A with Mr. Meyer to be included and that they return to open session at seven oh six.
Second. Moving second of the board, go into executive session to discuss the potential purchase of property pursuant to the exception for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property under K O M A with Mr. Meyer to be included and that we return to open session at seven oh six in this room. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carried, five zero. Back in regular session. Closing business items tonight, do you have any recommendations?
I do. I recommend that we hire Amy Unruh as cafeteria worker at nine twenty-five an hour.
So moved?
Second.
It's moving seconded to hire Amy Unruh to join the cafeteria staff at nine twenty-five an hour. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carried, five zero. Anything else come before the board?
Next month, we'll talk, my contract, initial discussion about that. And Mark will be here for the audit and then our senior release applications.
Okay. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, we adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carried, five zero, we are adjourned.